All right, now? Okay, I think now we're good.
Are we good?
We're good.
All right, so I will call the meeting to order. Uh, we have a forum, so matters from the public, has anyone signed up? Anyone here? Doesn't look like anyone in the public here. So, um, so on to approval of the minutes. We have the minutes from the February eighteenth. Meeting, I guess, well, we have the minutes for our special meeting next time.
Next.
Okay. All right. Um, any comments on the minutes? All right, is there a motion to approve the minutes? So moved, their second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, the minutes are approved. The financial report. Avery, you want to, since Andy's not here, is there anything you want to? Here with us about the financial report?
Um, I think we're making good progress. There was only a few changes that we had. We added the solar pollinator that went through recently. And then a few of the tax rebate payments went through. Other than that, not too much changed.
All right.
We're about to enter the time of year where the bonds, um, are invoiced. Um, the, the, when, when bonds are invoiced, those, those funds are primarily what adds to that bottom line. Unobligated, unappropriated number at the bottom of the report. So over the next several financial reports, we'll expect to see that number change.
Okay, great. All right, um. Unfinished business.
All right. Um, so before you all leave, a couple of items under your agenda, um. Including, um, a one-page memo that just goes over, um. A request that the EDA, before the EDA today for, um, a cash match towards, um, a Go Virginia planning grant application. From the group that presented at your February, your regular February meeting, um, on the Innovation Corridor Strategic Roadmap. Um, this is a regional project. It's being submitted to Go Virginia. Through the Central Virginia Partnership for Economics Development as the applicant. Um, the goals of the project are to identify our region's competitive advantage in life science, national security, and digital IT. Um, gain a line of sight to economic growth opportunities for our region. And create a strategic roadmap with actionable steps for intentional economic growth. The, um, budget for the overall project is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, one hundred thousand dollars is will be requested from Go Virginia. Um, leaving an obligation for a cash match from the region of fifty thousand dollars. Um, and there have been cash contributions committed by the University of Virginia Foundation, Oregon Group, Green County, and the City of Charlottesville. And the request to Alamo County Economic Development Authority. Is for a fifteen thousand dollar cash match commitment if the grant was to be awarded. Um, the application is due later this month, and, um. If it proceeded all the way through the state process, um, they would get a notice of award in June. Um, spoiler ahead to later in the slideshow, um, Alamo County was successful in the Go Virginia application that we submitted for the Ravanna Futures Project. Um, and so there's, uh, the, our region is actually out of money for the fiscal year, um, because of that award. Um, and so the funds for this roadmap. Study, if it was to be approved at state level, would be available July first. Um, and the, the horizon for the, um, schedule that we've got from the consultant that would be doing the work. Would have, um, a final plan, um, in spring of twenty twenty-six.
Right, any questions about the grant request? I think it seems reasonable.
Yeah, okay.
All right, is there a motion? I move that the EDA adopt this resolution appropriating fifteen thousand dollars to the Central Virginia Partnership for Economic Development for a match to. The implementation grant from Go Virginia, subject to the terms of the resolution and the terms of the Go Virginia Grant Guidelines. An agreement and to authorize the authority's chair and treasurer execute all documents necessary to complete this match grant. There a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, there we go.
Thank you.
Thanks. Um, okay, so the. Bond resolution, I think Jim is on. Did he get promoted? If he's not, it's early. And is Mike Graff participating?
No, we just have Jim Bolton here.
Okay, all right. Um, so this is the. Um, this is the resolution to approve the bond. Transaction that we got our special meeting to approve our new, uh. New fee schedule, so Jim earlier today sent out, uh, an email with. Confirming that he had reviewed it, confirming that it met with all of the requirements. Um, so. Is he? Trying to get him on the screen. Oh, there he is. Hey, Jim. All right. Whoa, voices change. Yeah, we got a sound issue here.
Hey, hey. Do you mind? Would you mind rejoining? Okay. That's the way we fixed this issue last time. We can have just a second. Yeah.
That's important. All right, well, while we. Uh, while we wait for Jim to rejoin, uh, at the suggestion of the vice chair, who's a more thoughtful person than I. I think we should recognize our new member of the EDA, Frank Bredman, who joins us. I've known Frank for a while, and I am glad that he's here. And why don't we all just, should we introduce ourselves very quickly while we?
Yeah.
Jim's back, but we'll, why don't we, why don't we proceed with this and then we'll do introductions later? How about that?
Sounds good.
All right, Jim, can you hear us?
I can. Is this better?
Much better.
Thank you. I don't know why it does that. I, I sent out an email this, this morning at around noon for, to the board members, and I did that so that. I, I tried to cover everything I could think of as, as far as this resolution is concerned, and also briefed you on some very recent events. That I learned about yesterday afternoon and this morning. It looks like, uh, closing is, assuming that the board adopts the resolution and approves the matter. Looks like closing is going to be scheduled for sometime next week. Um, this is a, a little different. Actually, it's a lot different than what the EDA has normally done as far as bond resolutions. And financings are concerned, this is a taxable bond. Uh, the applicant wants to close next week. When he does that, it will be necessary for the. Chairman and the secretary to sign a few documents. And I've, um, sent out an email to Emily and Don and the EDA staff today. Trying to coordinate that matter. I propose that we, um. Organize ourselves through Emily's, uh, offices and facilities and that. Mike send, Mike Graff send the, the closing documents directly to Emily, and then she then makes arrangements with the. Chairman and secretary to have the documents signed. I'll also sign any documents that I have to sign and. Give Emily my opinion, and then she'll send everything back by express mail. And that will be the end of it. I've asked Emily to prepare an invoice for the EDA's fee. I'll bill the applicant for my fee separately. Um, outside of this matter. Um, and all the expenses of the closing and, and including, well, all the expenses of the closing should be covered by the applicant. I'm happy to answer any questions that any board member may have. Uh, I did not send this email out to the new board member. I'll do that. After, as soon as this is over, uh, the reason for that being that is my understanding was he had not yet taken his oath of office, and I did not want to confuse the matter. Um, today before the board. That's all I really have to say. If you have any questions, let me know. Oh, one last thing. I, I'm hopeful that, that Mike Graff and McGuara Woods will be giving us some more business in this interesting area of taxable bonds. Uh, just for the board's benefit, uh, bond issuance is, is since, really nineteen eighty-six and the Tax Reform Act of nineteen eighty-six has been largely limited. Uh, to, um, um, governmental entities and nonprofits, but, uh. Hopefully this taxable, uh, will open up some more activity.
Anybody have any questions? Frank, you were sworn in, correct?
I have sworn in and I did receive it.
All right, great.
Okay.
So, any questions for Jim? All right, thanks, Jim. Um, so is there a motion? So, I, there we go. All right, so is, is somebody want to make that motion? I move that the EDA adopt this bond resolution authorizing, among other things, the issuance of its taxable Pantops Hospitality Revenue Bonds, Series Twenty Twenty-Five. As stated in the attached resolution. All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Resolution passes.
Thank you. That, that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take my leave. Good seeing you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Bye-bye.
You want to do introductions now? Yeah, let's do, yeah, so, um. Ron Long, Chair of the Economic Development Authority. You're the moral vice chair. David Storm, Scotsman.
Steve, one meeting ahead of you. Now the newest, new guy.
That means you're twice as smart.
Trevor Henry, Deputy County Executive, Support, uh, Economic Development, Public Safety is part of my portfolio.
Belemisto, currently Abama County Board Supervisors and friend of Sue.
We're all a friend of Sue.
Oh, okay.
And I'm Richie Delory, I'm Deputy County Attorney. We met at length yesterday, so.
Emily Kilroy, the Director of the Office.
JT Nibir, Deputy Director.
And Avery Thompson, Major Analyst.
And how about the rest, the other EDO office staff?
Ashley Kanter, I'm Business Development.
Net Art Project Manager, Ravanna Futures.
Yes.
And here's perform live.
All right, so. Thriving Economy Chapter. Next on the agenda.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I will spend the next five to seven minutes just talking a little bit about the Thriving Economy Chapter of the Comp Plan. Uh, David Benish from the Department of Community Development is here with me. Um, to, uh, help record any comments and, and help answer any questions that you have a, about this chapter, so. Um, just as a, a, a brief overview, you have the Comp Plan is the county's twenty-year vision. Um, for a variety of different, um, policy areas, and, and so. The Thriving Economy Chapter is just one of ten different chapters. That are contemplated throughout this update process. Um, this is required under state code every five years, um, to be updated, and so, um. Uh, the, the names of the chapters, um, change with, with each update, uh, just a little bit. Um, but they, uh, they address really significant, um, considerations for the county in terms of. These elements here. Which are, um. What do we want our community to be in twenty years? What do we need to do to get there? And how will we achieve it? And so, um. I'll go back here just to give a quick overview of this chapter. Um, it, it mainly references the Economic Development Strategic Plan. Which is somewhat unique in, in that, um, other chapters don't have a, a specific department that is driving so much of the work. That they can reference a specific plan, um, per se. But, um, in this plan, um. We will be referencing all of the great data that our consultants are, are developing for us, and, um. The Comp Plan Chapter will be talking mainly about broader issues, things like land use policy. Kind of broader goals, looking out to that twenty-year timeframe. Our, our, uh, strategic plan is just a five-year timeframe from twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-nine. So I'll just really quickly talk a little bit about the goals, objectives, and actions. Um, within the Comp Plan. The goal for thriving economy at the, at the county level talks a lot about economic mobility. For our citizens, and it references these other chapters that, um, provide important, um. Components of economic development that we don't necessarily deal with on a daily basis. You think about. Housing or transportation or schools, things that make significant contributions to our quality of life. Um, and are important to economic development initiatives. Um, but we don't necessarily drive. This is where you'll find that, that bigger vision. Um, and it, it touching across all those different chapters. So, um, what do we need to do to get there? Um, these are the five objectives that are currently in the draft. And they talk about things that you've heard staff talk about, um. On different projects and in our staff report each, each month. Um, so like number three talks about our business retention and expansion program. Um. As I mentioned earlier, number one is just recognizing that our strategic plan will be the primary document. That's really important just because Project Enable was adopted, um, after our last Comp Plan update. And so there wasn't a strong connection to the Comp Plan. But moving forward, because our strategic plan will be adopted. By the time AC forty-four is adopted, there'll be a, a strong tie together, and, um. That's something that doesn't exist right now. Um, thinking about the land use policy objectives, um, making sure we have sufficient land for everything that we want to do. Um. Thinking about workforce development. And reducing barriers to workforce particip- participation. You may remember from our last meeting, um. One of the things our consultants pulled out is that our area lags in workforce participation. So is it housing? Is it childcare? Is it, um, transportation? What are things that contribute to that? That the entire county can be working towards to address it? Um. How will we achieve it? Uh, these are the specific actions that the Comp Plan talks about. And that's designating areas. So, you know, site development is a big barrier to, um, our economic development, and, um. This is the specific action that, um, community development and others would be committing to. Um, providing land where it makes sense, uh, adjacent to infrastructure, um, away from sensitive environmental features and the like. This is the part of the county's vision where they also talk about, um, establishing a priority review process. And removing regulatory barriers to, uh, site development. We consistently hear through our BRE meetings, through our public-private partnerships, through other avenues, that. This is a rear, a real barrier to investment, and so, um. What are some things we can do to improve that for people choosing to invest here? So, the entire text was included in the board's materials that, um, I know came, uh, fairly recently, but. Again, we have, uh, David Benish here to collect feedback. The way feedback works on the draft chapters is, um, members of the public, the planning commission, the EDA, the board. Will all get a chance to weigh in on this language, and then staff will review all of the feedback at the same time. Before proposing a revised draft to the Board of Supervisors. So, back on February twenty-seventh, um, Chair Long helped, uh, with a lunch and learn with the public. A, a virtual, um, engagement opportunity where he helped answer questions about the airport, uh, among other things. The Planning Commission discussed this, uh, last week, March eleventh, and then we're here today to collect feedback from the EDA. Um, and so, you know, the, the, uh, planning staff will present it to the board, um, coming up on April sixteenth. And so with that, I'll pause and see if there are any questions or comments about the Thriving Economy Chapter.
I'll get started. And I'm not sure who this question or comment is for, but we'll throw it out there and see where it goes. When I think about what we do here in the, as a board, and this, this, an office where. One of our objectives is to take the financial load off of residential taxation, move it towards commercial taxation. Because we've seen and you hear that you talk with your neighbors, you, you get bills for all of us who live in the county. You know, the rapid appreciation of real estate values, and that's reflected in the tax rates for. The taxation of repaying residentially. And it's interesting, I'm just, and maybe it's another chapter, which I haven't studied as closely, but. Is, is this maybe an implicit goal of, of what we're doing in terms of economic development, or is it explicit and I just missed it? Is, is anyone thinking about it? I just not seeing it. I'm just curious. So I don't know who, who would weigh in on that or comment.
Yeah, I, I think, I think you're teasing out the, um, the. The blessing and the curse of the approach that we're sort of navigating through right now of really letting the Economic Development Strategic Plan. Be the place where we focus on what's, what's, what's the real, you know, near-term target for how we should be approaching economic development. Um, and because we're writing the Comp Plan at the same time that we're doing the strategic plan, it's hard to point at both of those things and say, this is what they both say. Um, but I certainly think through the conversations that we've had thus far, um, through the data work that the, um. Strategic Plan Consultants have done and the initial stakeholder engagement that we've done. Um, that, that has been a theme, uh, in every conversation that we've had. Um, and so I expect that would be, um, articulated well in the strategic plan. Um, as we continue to move that down the line, and you all will have, um, some, some, um, quality time with the consultants when they're here next week.
Can you go back to the goals?
Yeah.
Or the object, I guess it's really the, I don't know whether it's, whether it's a goal or an objective, but I, you know, I do think. That is something that potentially. Wouldn't go in here, whichever, whether it's a goal or objective, um. That, to say, you know, part of this is to help balance the tax. Deal with that somewhere. That's something to think about, because I think as an overarching goal, I think that's part of what we are trying to do. And politically, I, when I, you know, I talk to my neighbors and, you know, my dental hygienist, and when they think of economic development, what they think of is. Is traffic. And they're, they're like, we like it the way it is, and so there is some, in, in, economic development does expose a community to some risk. Uh, various kinds. And, and I think that we need to make sure, I'm not talking about selling it to citizens, but giving them a full picture of what we're doing and why we're doing it, like. If, if citizens don't understand what benefits, they, you know, that they've already have a job, they already have, you know, you think about, they might already have all the career. Uh, training that they need, that they might already be fully participating, like, none of this makes any sense to them. On a practical level, but they do understand that, that we need to find some way to attain the, these kind of annual rapid, the rapid increases in. Residential taxes. So, yeah, that's fine. Go ahead.
So are you talking about? Taxed, uh, revenue diversification?
Yes.
Okay, that's something that the board really wants to do. We are limited by what we can do regarding the state. I mean, we did the. Plastic bag tax, it's not a huge amount. We did cigarette tax, not a huge amount, but at least it's, it's a beginning, so we're hoping. Maybe future state, um. Representatives can give us more ability to diversify. Uh, otherwise, the only way we really col- collect revenue is through our tax base and our, our real estate tax rate. Uh, real property tax for the cars. So we're kind of stuck, and I see number three as very, um, that's something we should be. The board should be looking at, your board should be looking at regarding, uh, business, uh, expansion. But I wanted to ask, is that just in the development area?
Well, so that's, um, I mean, I do think that there is a. And in number two. This kind of gets to the whole targeted industries idea. You know, it's capitalized, like, that's a defined term, but I don't know that it's defined term, and I don't even know if we're going to have that term in our, in our plan, so. Not sure if that's, if, maybe it. Needs to be lowercase, but I do think, I mean, right now, wineries are, I think, or. Agri tourism are, are part of our target industries, and those are not in the development area. Those are outside the development. So I think that needs to, you know, we don't want everything in the rural areas, but the rural areas are part of. What we're doing, so I think that. Uh. That number two needs to account for that.
And you know, as a, as a, for supervisors member, the only thing I can see that's going to really push everything. Uh, greatly as far as business will be Ravanna Station. And that's, uh, what, ten-year project? Okay, at least. Oh, hopefully within ten years, but I mean, that's going to be a huge. Income for us.
Well, and.
Everything work out.
Yeah, well, and the, the innovation corridor and the things that are potentially more important, that's other, yeah, other potential.
Correct.
Increase, I mean, the, the commercial real estate tax base increases, yeah.
Yes.
So it maybe is less on the, on the residential, right?
We'd love nothing more than to reduce the tax rate. If we can afford it.
Sure, yeah. But that's, right, that's sort of the piece that, that we're getting to. If you could look down. At the later documentation and we got into implementation, the vast majority of the implementation pieces are all surrounding land use, which isn't. Something we have a lot of control over, right? That's going to be. Board of Supervisors, and, I mean, we have some opportunities to sort of influence it with. Encouraging Home Depot to redevelop that entire site, the way that we've been able to do that. Um. But it becomes a land use piece, and, and to. Everyone, right, the, the elephant in the room is, is there a desire among the board to restore? Development area to closer to five percent of the county as it, as it once was. Um, and in expanding. Restoring, I'll use instead of expanding. Um, in restoring it, you know, you, you account for, you know, biscuit run is a tremendous opportunity. But it's a tremendous loss for the development area as well, now that it's been rezoned rural. So, so what that would look like in terms of. Getting it zoned properly and not just. People who see, I'm going to build twelve thousand houses, and I'm going to build my strip malls, and we're going to have. And, and I shop there all the time, you know, in another Hollymead Town Center situation versus. What's more commercial that brings in? Revenue and generates products and services that are sold outside the area, right? That's the other piece. Bringing in those industries where the money flows into the county. Um, and doesn't just circulate within the county. And I'm not.
No.
Asking you to, to weigh in on that immediately, but that's sort of. That's, you know, land use is going to drive so much of what we're able to do. Because there's.
Because there's not thirty nine sites, I think I saw that were tier ready at this point in in the entire county. Um so we can only do so much with the land that's available. Question is, will there be more land available? In which case we can be more aggressive in pursuing. You know, uh business, not just business retention, but business attraction, which. I don't know if business attraction is something we want to include in there either. It's always been retention and expansion, but if you look at our new memorandum of understanding. We sort of get to that a little bit.
I mean, I think the meeting with the board of supervisors where we presented the M O U, it was pretty clear that. The board is in favor of business traction, right?
It's just, it's not mentioned, so.
Good point.
I apologize. My eleven year old is calling me.
Well, call. Any other comments or questions?
I'd like to ask a question about number four. Um increase local workforce access to job trading, career development, career ladder jobs. The word access, does that imply that the job training, career development, career ladder jobs exist? And people just can't get to them? What what is it that you're trying to say in number four? Because when you say increase access, that kind of implies that people can't get to it and you're going to try to help them get to it. Maybe it's not there. What are you trying to say?
Yeah, I I think uh overall, it's addressing sort of both. There is um. Access to job training that allows them to have access to jobs and availability of jobs. There are other. Uh objectives that actually speak to the infrastructure that we can open. So there are actions that address uh both of those. I think that access is sort of a broader thing, access to the train. Um that 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 training is available. Also the physical needs, physically being able to get to.
Does this, does number four include expanding? The number of career ladder jobs or diversifying the types of career ladder jobs? Is that part of number four or not?
I think that is part of um. Yeah, I think that's that's sort of, I think four is really more addressing uh. Providing uh the employees the opportunity to be prepared for those jobs that the expansions and the retention and the attraction create.
I would just suggest that. It might be worthwhile considering the need to expand or diversify the types of career ladder jobs that are available. Um as well as access to them.
It's a good point. I I think we were, some of the actions we anticipated would kind of fall into some of those other objectives providing jobs. So this particular one was oriented towards um engaging and providing the employees better opportunities to. Be ready for those jobs. And maybe I can speak to Mr. Long's comment a little bit and just to. The uh objective four, if you could go to the.
Yeah, we go.
All objectives.
Go back to all of them.
Yeah. Uh one of the things that is um sort of incomplete in looking at this chapter is that we have a number of other actions and objectives in other chapters.
Right.
Rural areas, sector, rural area concept is not that it's a established area for a high level firm. But in that earlier section, there are a number of objectives and actions that address specifically addressing agribusiness.
Okay.
Um and so those are kind of absent in this section. This is one of the things we're kind of, we struggle with a little bit. Some of these actions, as someone said, most of what we do is very much land use related. And there are specific uh actions that say encourage um right type of value added agribusiness. And so uh if you're interested in those, we we had a slide that summarized some of those. I can forward those to you so you can see what. Didn't actually get mentioned in this section.
Got you.
In one of others. I do think it's a very valid point that when you look at. Objective two and three, it does does that what now is a target industry doesn't come across. I think we it's straight strengthen business retention, expansion, prioritize the industries identified in the comp plan. And that earlier section of the comp plan pretty much hits the target.
Yeah, okay.
Sure, would you mind um, could you give me an example of reduce barriers to workforce? What's what's an example?
Uh the some of the barriers that were de- defined when we went out and talked to the public were things as simple as transportation is not available. Childcare was difficult to with uh to get and afford housing, obviously is a very big one. So the amount of time spent on transportation or cost of travel or. Um kind of makes this not a market for them to.
And I think that's also stuff that will come out in. The discussion with consultants.
Yes.
In this, I think there was a lot of discussion about. Both barriers and also. The the lower workforce participation that we tend to have. So I think there's there's good information there.
Mm hmm.
I really appreciate the comment about attraction because I think that's inherent in here, but probably we're stating along with retention and expansion. For us, expansion almost implies um. Attraction of new businesses, but it's not obvious. That's a good.
Yeah.
Well, I think the, you know, the the. Previous boards of supervisors would not have agreed with that statement, but I think this is a. Because I think it was always, if we've got a business here, we can help them get bigger, but we're not going to get somebody who's not here. That's pretty good, but I think the the current board feels seems to feel differently about.
Yeah, the new M L U puts puts that firmly in place. So I think that's a that's a great note for you all that uh that's adding word attraction could be beneficial for this.
Okay.
For sure.
And if I could just.
Sure.
Regarding what, we just had a meeting with the school board yesterday and they're actually wanting to implement. Programs where students, I'm not sure what grade level, but students could actually go in and intern or. Observe, I I'm not sure what the setup is, but they could actually learn from different uh businesses. So that they can see, okay, is that something I'd be interested in pursuing? So they're they're doing this whole thing regarding careers and and being able to uh. So we can train our workforce for jobs that are here and the ones that would be coming up.
Right, so so the groundbreaking a few weeks ago for the academy, right, so that the new academy right by Albemarle High School gets to that. And it's usually, it's it's mostly geared toward juniors and seniors, I think, that experiential learning piece, the internships. Um but it's open to everybody.
It's open to everyone and it's an academy for four hundred students. And it will be actually filled with uh because there's. There's a shortage of classrooms in Albemarle High School, so some of those classrooms will be used in the meantime for Albemarle High School students. But also there will be that career center um in various classes there until they all fill up. Uh what I did hear is that the the one at Comcast uh building.
Comcast.
Center one, Comdial, I keep saying Comcast. Uh Comdial, the center one, that those classes weren't filled, but the new incoming freshmen are filling up all the classes. So as they move up that whole school, they'll up also. So you know, just sometimes it takes time because people are at least to something. So once they catch on, then they're all in favor.
If I could just say something.
Sure.
I don't know all the board members and you probably don't know me. Um from nineteen ninety nine to two thousand twenty two, so for twenty three years. I was president of Piedmont Virginia Community College. So I have some working knowledge about workforce issues, education issues. Um I also served for about twenty years on the boards of Thomas Jefferson Partnership for Economic Development. And the uh Central Virginia Partnership for Economic Development as it morphed into a new name. I probably served on that board for about twenty years. I was also on the Go Virginia Board for a number of years. So I have some experience with the things you're talking about and I hope I can contribute to your work.
Sure you will. Thanks. All right, anything else? All right, thanks, J T. Okay, so. Um as you will recall, at our February meeting, we approved the M O U. Um the largest amount of time in our discussion with board of supervisors revolved around the one percent fee. Uh we thought we were, we we proposed this. Change to a thinking that this was to address some of the concerns finance had. It actually made things more complicated for finance. They um thought that the way we did propose it made it actually more difficult to do so. Emily and I met um with Jacob Finance, we talked about. Options and basically what we came up with was this idea that we would take the money part out of this agreement. Since it really doesn't have anything to do with what we're doing here and we'll just agree that we will enter into another agreement with finance. Hovering physical ser- physical services. The nice thing about doing that is it gives us a little more flexibility to make changes to that agreement if we need to without having to. Discuss the M O U. So I think what we're going to do is go back to what was originally proposed, which. Finance is open to, which is just a one percent on outside funds. But then if we start having a lot more money and there's a reason to adjust it, we can adjust it if um. In talking through it, it gave us more flexibility. If we end up taking on more roles, then we can adjust that agreement at that point without having to go. So in order to keep our schedule with being on the board of supervisors' agenda, we wanted to bring this back and. Get the board's approval to this change. Uh so that's sort of how we got here. Anything else, Dan?
No, I mean, again, I just to echo what Don said, I feel like having a financial piece out of the M O U between the E D A and the board. Keeps that document very much focused on what are the things that the board and the E D A together agree are should be a focus area for economic development in the county. And so in that way, I think it keeps it much more focused on um on the one and the why. Um and then let's let this separate fiscal services agreement really handle the administration of that.
And then the um finance department is trying very hard to come up with consistent approach across all people they act for fiscal agents. And I think that's a long term process and everybody has different things that they want, but I it also, I think, will allow them to do that as they make progress to. Any comments or questions on the change?
When does that fiscal services agreement come back to us? Is that three months, a year, next week?
Been about six years in the making. So I don't know. We actually used to. Um we 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 have, we used to have one and it just expired and we just kind of continued as friends. Um so there is a template for one. Um the broadband authority actually has fiscal services agreement with um with the county. So um it it, once the terms are agreed upon, it shouldn't take, shouldn't take that long to bring it back.
Soon.
If we're, if, you know, if we're trying really hard, three months, you know, it may be more like six months, just the back the pace of revisions. Um but it's certainly um. A fairly limited scope document, I think we'll be able to work through it with with some speed.
We were not talking about a lot of money. So.
Am I getting this right that instead of asking for a set amount of money given to the E D A and then. Kind of like, okay, here's some money and then we, and then you all have to think of how we can spend it. It would just be that if you come up with something, then you come to the board and ask for money.
No, so this this is, this is the um the the administrative fee that the county places on with partner agreements that the county. Serves as the fiscal agent to to help recoup the cost of just serving as the fiscal agent to that entity. Um so this is around the fee that that the finance department um levies on those partners. Um and that that was really the focus of the discussion.
Levy, levy is on the E D A.
And and as all, as all this partner agency.
So this is money the E D A pays to the county to for providing fiscal services.
They shouldn't have to do that.
Consistent across multiple, multiple authorities.
By way of background, so we have partner agencies outside of the authorities like this authority in broadband. Um I'll say like um the Blue Ridge Detention Center. Um the E C C where the county serves as fiscal agent and I think generally speaking, they charge a two percent fee. So all 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 monies that go through the county, two percent goes to compensate the county for one, their accounting services. But they also do the um, they they, all of them are obligated to do an annual audit, which is, we we bring in an outside um accountant to to do that. Um and that that has some expense, so um and of course fiscal services has to has to staff.
You're all right. Well, and these are services that we'd have to pay if we did it on our own, we'd have to pay for it and there are. Real benefits to having the 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 professionalism and uh oversight that comes for having that money go through finance. All right, so is there a motion to approve to have the, whatever the resolution is? There is a res. Yeah, there's resolution. There's M O U.
Sure, I move that this authority approve the attached revised memorandum of understanding between the County of Albemarle, Virginia. And this Economic Development Authority of Albemarle County, Virginia. And transmit the same to the Albemarle County Board of Supervisors for consideration. If unchanged by the board of supervisors, then the adoption of this motion will constitute the authority's final approval and adoption of the memorandum of understanding. And authorization for the chair to sign.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call a favor?
All right. All right.
Any opposed? All right, motion passed. All right, staff report.
Okay, excellent. Thank you all. Um, okay, and Ashley is gonna kick us off on the staff report um on the um. Uh business retention and expansion work.
Yes, thank you, Emily. So we have been working this quarter for Q one, focusing. On biotech and med devices and really just trying to double down on that sector and and get some connectivity with those two industries. And since we met last, we've met with four biotech companies and one international intelligence, sorry, and national security. And since we, but since I started about three years ago, we've been working on trying to move forward with a business retention and expansion questionnaire. So we put together in the last, what, three months or so of business climate questionnaire that we wanted to distribute to the business community. At large to learn about the challenges that they're dealing with, any kind of barriers that seem consistent. So that that we as an office can help support our business community. So really excited about the fact that. We were able to launch that earlier this month. Um. We've got it uh going out on social media. We've had asked our partners to to send it out um to to their their reach. And we've gotten several really um really interesting um feedback, comments and things of that nature lately. Um I'm sorry, as as of late, I mean, it's just going to help us kind of take take the B R E program and. And as we work with the strategic partners and our strategic plan development, determine what it is that they're facing on a consistent basis that we can control. You saw earlier in the the presentation, the um reducing barriers. Um that's really what we're we're really trying to do. And we're hearing a lot of consistencies, um so we hope we can, we can target all our efforts towards that. Um and if anybody wants to to access it, it's available on our website, enablealbemarle.org. You can reach out to me. And I'd be happy to share it with you if you've got anybody that might like to fill it out themselves.
Thanks, Ashley.
Sure. And then two recent events that that staff attended, you can see at the top there. Um staff was able to attend the Chamber of Commerce ribbon cutting at their new location just across from Albemarle High School. Um there you can see Chamber Board Chair Jonathan Chason and then right there in the in the green is supervisor. Right there in the, in the green is Supervisor McKeel. And Senator Deeds on the side there, Marijuana Day Wade and a lot of the chamber staff there. It was a really cool event. And if you haven't tried nothing but cakes, you should because they're really delicious. And they're like little tiny cupcakes. They have little cupcakes and then they have bigger cakes and then bigger cakes. Nothing but cakes located in the Hollybee. But I'm, I'm not wanting to just roll up on a new business, so I was happy to, to try something out. Um, experiment there, but it was, it was a lot of fun. And then below um, is recently at PVCC at the Ballick Center. They Dominion and PVCC hosted an energy day and it brought together. Um, energy industry leaders just to learn more about how. PVCC and the community in general can, can support, we, like we were just talking about um. The workforce need that's, that's coming our way as, as we develop. Uh, the area we're gonna have um, have a booming need for, for energy workforce and so the folks at PVCC. And the folks in the industry sectors along with local government. And workforce agencies are trying to collaborate together to see how. We can make that path forward and provide, provide those energy industries with uh, the workforce that they need to, to keep up with speed.
One of the things that I find really exciting about that energy day, there's an advisory committee that'll be forming to, to meet together with partners kind of across the energy sector. And workforce partners um, and, and it's a really focused effort. Around one industry that you can kind of get your hands around. To say, how do we make sure that we've got the right folks in the recruitment pipeline, getting them the right skills, skills licensure certifications to be able to do the job. Um, and then making sure that there's nice connections with private sector so that these folks have jobs when they complete the training that they um. Are signing up for. Um, it's a really nice way to sort of say. If we just focus on this one thing, can we move the needle? Um, and then the idea is, you know, we learn from that and then we can hopefully look at some other sectors as well. So I'm excited about the, the, the energy around energy.
Yeah, it was very, very interesting. It was, it was something I was excited to learn more about.
What does that training include? Like what, I'm remembering the hard time imagining, like if you, this were the auto business.
Example, would it just, they think like in any other industry, um, something that coming off the floor like I mean, a tech, a maintenance tech. That needs to know how to install solar panels or operate drone. Equipment uh, for a specialized activity. Uh, it, it, you, you wouldn't imagine, I mean, there, there's just like all kinds of different facets of. Of technical automation, um. Um, just mechanical computers, all, all kinds of, kinds of good stuff. I could give you a more articulate list of.
No, that's good.
Hey, on your first slide, you said you met with three biotech firms and an intel.
Intelligence.
Yeah, and how did, how did um, you come upon them or did they?
So we, we typically go um, with um, with our contact lists and, and the private sector and the um, defense sector. And, and reach out and, and just ask if there's any support they need. A lot of the work that we're doing. Um, in the defense and. I'm sorry, intelligence and national security, I've got to keep remembering that, that new acronym. Uh, it is, is connections that, that exist and a need is exchanged.
Yeah, I'd be glad to help you with that.
That would be.
Yes, that'd be wonderful.
That would be wonderful. Because obviously that's a, it's a tough, it's a tough.
Absolutely, yeah.
And, um, any, any. That'd be very much appreciated.
Sure, just let me know.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, our bio, our bio tech list, we, we developed alongside the Seville Bio Hub. Um, uh, the Defense Affairs Committee can be helpful in the space. So we, we try to leverage those.
Sure.
Folks who are working in those sectors um, to be able to say, you know, who's, who's interesting in, in Alamoor County that we should be talking to.
You know, she, we work very closely with the region and the state and they have, um, they have target lists too that they, they're. Folks they're really interested in meeting with and they'll, we work together to kind of.
Thank you.
I think if.
Thanks, Ashley. Um, and then just a couple other places, economic development's been in the public eye a lot the past couple weeks because of a couple of different events that have been happening. Um, the, the image at the top right is my favorite. But County Executive Jeff Richardson and City Manager Sam Sanders at the Chambers State of the Community event, that's um. This was the third or fourth of this annual series that they've done. Um, they had over a hundred business leaders and nonprofit leaders from our region. Um, convened to hear from um, Hamilton Lombard, who was a demographer with the Walden Cooper Center at the University of Virginia. Um, the city and the county made a presentation sort of the state of that community. Um, and then they also feature, they generally will feature a local business, um, and Antoine Brinson who. Um, has um, culinary concepts, which is a workforce training program in the culinary space. They also run the Go Cook program, which the CDA has helped support, um, students having a seat in, um, helping folks transition. Um, into the workforce, um, changing, you know, what they're doing in the workforce with a focus on culinary. Um, they do a really nice job connecting their students with jobs, um, so they'll, they have partnerships with restaurants um, around town and they'll help to place their students. Um, in productive jobs. Um, so it was a really nice morning to hear about what's going on. Um, and economic development was a topic that, um, that both the city manager and the county executive covered. Um, but a lot of the work that, that the EDA has supported was, was um, was on display as part of that event. Um, JT is, this is a picture of JT presenting um. A slide we took from the county executives' presentation. Um, at um, one of the um, community advisory committees, there are seven community advisory committees, there are citizen committees. That um, are oriented around the different neighborhoods within the development area of the county. Um, ten to fifteen community members from all the different development areas. Um, meet, um, Director Storm was previously a member of one, that's how we first met. Um, and I used to help run that program, um, so it's near and near to my heart. Um, several of them asked if, um, if we could, if economic development would talk to them about what's going on in economic development. So we um, did a series of presentations at um, the community advisory committees. Um, and then the bottom picture is um. Um, as the Seville, several of you were there at the Seville, um, or Commonwealth Bio, hmm, I kept changing the name. The Commonwealth Bio Accelerator, um, which is the Wet Lab Accelerator project that the EDA um, has a three-year funding commitment towards that pilot program. Um, celebrated the ribbon cutting and North Fork Discovery Park um, last week.
In West Monterey.
Last, two weeks ago? Okay, a couple of weeks ago. Um. Uh, again, that is just a, a really exciting um, project. There were a couple hundred people there. It was just a, a. Energetic um, room filled of supporters. Um, from our region, from the Roanoke area, Seville Bio Hub has a partnership with the Roanoke area and also the Richmond area. Um, and so just folks from across the Commonwealth just so excited to celebrate uh, this new asset, really for the, for the entire Commonwealth. Um, we're just very lucky to have its home be here with us. Um, so excited to see where that project takes us and they are full, they wanted to host four to six companies. Um, for their twelve-month pro, for their first twelve-month cohort, um, and their, their fall um, at six companies um, before they opened the door, which is really exciting.
Good problem to have.
Yeah? Um, just a quick update on Ravenna Futures, um, been very much focused on funding um. Requests that we have in place. Um, so Go Virginia, I mentioned earlier, um, the state board approved the request for, it's a total of sixteen hundred. Six hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, um, five hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars is actually going towards the project. Um, and then there's an admin, an administrative fee that we paid to Go Virginia as part of that program and that's, that's what the balance of that funding is for. Um, the, um, that, that grant will fund um, the design for site readiness work. Um, and our hope is that uh, that will put us in a good position to get really into site construction. With any funding that we would be successful in receiving from the Virginia Business Ready Sites Program. Um, so we were excited to receive that news uh, earlier this month. And we also on the BBRSP program, um, completed the next step of that cross, pro, process. Um, which was a virtual site visit, so uh, that's just a slide deck in case you're wondering what that means. With photos.
And more drone.
Move video embedded, you know, um, and if we are invited to the next step, the next step would be an in-person site visit where we would actually go out and visit the site. And make a presentation. What that actually looks like, we're, we're not quite sure, um, but if there, if, if to the extent that there's any opportunity to bring folks in, we'd certainly love to do that. Um, I'm just not sure what that, what the, um, what the format of that, that site visit would be. Um, and then that program um, is hoping to make their notice of award announcements in June sometime. Um, that's not a set public meeting that I can put on the calendar, so it's sometime in the month of June, we'll hear back on that. Um. One contingency of our Go Virginia um, um, award was that we applied to a VDOT program, the Economic Development Access Program. Um, lovingly called EDAP. Um, this is a program that a locality cannot just go ahead and apply to. So VDOT um, funding is a, is a primary way that the county funds major road projects. There's a couple of different programs that the county um, is making application to on a regular cycle, uh, revenue sharing program, the smart scale program. Um, there's some bike ped programs that VDOT has as well, but the county is making regular applications to. EDAP, you have to be referred by the Virginia Economic Development Partnership to be able to access that program. Um, and so they have, as part of our Go Virginia Award, they said, go ahead and, and um, activate that. Connection and make application to the EDAP programs. There were. Um, in the very early stages of getting ready to make an application to that program as well, um, and being VDOT, um, that funding would really focus on. The extension of Boulder's Road that we hope to achieve. Any questions on Ravenna Futures? Just, that's my only slide on Ravenna Futures, really focused on funding, but. Excellent, thank you. Back to JT.
Alright, yeah, I'll spend just a, a couple of minutes talking about our economic development strategic plan. We pledged to bring monthly updates to the EDA and um, our consultant team. Has spent the last few weeks doing a deep dive on our target industries and Emily and I. Yeah. And Emily and I were fortunate enough to um, get a preview of this information last week. They're, they're still refining it. Um, it includes analysis of an emerging cluster, um, Ashley was talking about Energy Day. Sort of clean technology and, and renewable energy is an emerging cluster that it, they are examining for us. Um, that's something that is a target within the city and they're. They're helping us determine if it might make sense for it to be a, a target here as well. I'm excited for the EDA to get the chance to um. Engage more directly with the consultant team next week. There will also be roundtable discussions with all of our identified target industries. Um, when the consultants come to visit next week, so I'm excited for this work to move forward. And so this is a slide that several directors have seen before. You know, we're, we're now moving into this, sort of this phase of the, of the work. Um, the drafting of the actual narrative and, and plan will be in the, in the April and May and June timeframe. Um, but we're, we're making good progress and um, just to. Review all the, all the dates that we've been talking about, um. The. The Board of Supervisors will be talking about the Thriving Economy Chapter, as I mentioned, um, in the middle of April. They'll be considering the MOU on the consent agenda and um. The two-on-two meetings will be next week and then the final adoption is estimated for our strategic plan in the August timeframe. So that's an update.
Couple of questions on the strategic plan. As far as the nomenclature, are we, is it Project Enable two point O, or is it getting a new name and that's just placeholders that. Development Strategic Plan or what are we doing on that?
Yeah, so um, when we look through what our other, you know, best local government that one-on-one, what is everybody else doing? Sort of where you start. Um, and most localities really just call it their economic development strategic plan. Um, and, um, and so I think um, at this point, we're planning on just sort of calling it that. Um, and not, not branding it in a particular way.
Okay, and if citizens want to have input, I mean, the activities we do are inherently. Why? I think we don't, we don't attract a lot of interest, but there may be some citizens who are interested in. In making their input, no, we, how do they go without doing that during this process?
Yeah, we have an, an engage page, we have a webpage where folks can uh, review information, submit information that they want to um. Share with us, they can ask questions, they're also welcome to go to um. Any of the, the upcoming public hearings about the Economic Development Strategic Plan. For anyone that may be uh, listening to the Zoom or, or watching the recording later. The authority has its own email address that folks could provide input to the EDA if, if, if that's where they would like to provide it. But um, staff can also accept it um, written or over the phone. Those are, those are the opportunities for the public.
And what are those public hearings? We talk, like where, where, what, what context are those?
Yeah. The. We envision that the strategic plan will be adopted at a joint um, meeting of the board and EDA in August and so that's, that could be a place.
But as we go through, we, you know, we put up a, a questionnaire, um. The word survey gets batted around a lot. Um, we try to call surveys the ones where we're. Working with a professional and they're doing the scientific sampling, then we can really draw conclusions from it. Recognizing that folks who are going to opt in to take a questionnaire that we might put on the website is not necessarily a representative sample. Um, so we had a questionnaire up for the strategic plan um, a couple of weeks ago. Um, we had over a hundred and fifty respondents. Um, we're still sort of working. Really robust, open answer question responses, um, and so we're still working through. Um, getting sort of a summary report together that we'll then post back to that site to talk about, so, so folks can see. You know, folks who went to that page and took the time to fill out those questions can see, okay, they heard me. Um, we're developing some themes from that and um, right now we're kind of doing an analysis of. Here's, you know, we have all this data from the consultant and we have all this qualitative response back from the community. Um, where was there a really strong overlap between the two? So the data showed us this and the community affirmed that. Um, and then where are things that we can see in the data that the community didn't really touch on? Um, and what are things that the community was really interested in that the data didn't really show us and then, you know, we can kind of do a next level of analysis of. You know, what do we think that means and is there more, and is there more interrogation that we want to do with that? Um, we'll find opportunities as we continue to get through the process where we can do touch points like that as well. Um, to invite the community to participate and help shape the plan.
Yeah, that's pretty thorough.
Alright, so now we have a closed session. I'll read this one. Uh, I move that the Alamoor County Economic Development Authority go into a closed meeting. As authorized by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, section two point two dash three seven one one. Change of Virginia, under subsection six to discuss and consider. Best in the public funds related to an economic development fund performance agreement. In Congress Inc., where bargaining is involved and where it may. Public initially would adversely affect the financial interests. Of the county and subsection eight to consider, to discuss and consider consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters related to bond raising. Performance agreement, which requires provision of legal advice by such counsel. And subsection twenty-nine to discuss and consider the award of a public contract related to the performance agreement of the Fannie Most Inc. It involves the expenditure of public funds, the public discussion of which would adversely affect the negotiating strategy of the EDA regarding the terms of the performance. Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Alright.
Alright, so we will move into closed session. So we go in next door?
Excellent.
Alright.
Next door. She heard you.
And it's also reaching.
We go, okay. I move that the EDA certified by recorded votes to the best of each director's knowledge. Only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting departments in Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Identified in the motion authorizing the flow of meeting were heard, discussed or considered in closed meetings. We need a full call but.
Do we have a second?
Okay, yes.
Director Long.
I.
Director Moore.
I.
Director Storm.
I.
Director Hood.
I.
Director Freedman.
I.
Right. Anything else? Other matters? So we've got the resident residents folks coming next week, right? Anything else? All right, then the meeting will be adjourned until April 15th, four o'clock. Meeting is adjourned. Whatever. See you April 15th.
Can't be more than two people.